Seven o'clock, the meeting will come to order. Embrace Los Bruns Cascade Township Supervisor, Clerks Slater, please call the role.
Trust you Nordhook?
Here.
President Los Bruns here, Treasure Pierce. Trusty Kessel.
Here.
Trusty Shipley.
Present.
Looks later here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Is there a motion or discussion for approval of the agenda?
Shipley makes a motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
That's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have no presentations this evening. Which brings us to public comments. Anything on the agenda not scheduled for a public hearing? Now is the time to. Not scheduled for a public hearing? Sorry, um. We have a second section for public comments. No, no worries. I'm just a softie on this stuff, so I'm trying to. Um, so for tonight, we do have one item that will have its own separate public hearing regarding updating our floodplain ordinance. And then we also have, um, now is the time to comment on moth, gypsy moth, spongy moth sprays, Fourth of July celebrations. Street plans. Welcome, Mr. Vandercock.
Ken Vandercock, seventy-two hundred Leighton. Ben? We had an eviction.
We did.
You went to the lawyers?
Mr. Vandercock, you're making me look bad. We gotta do it at the second, second public comment session.
I'm just asking if he had a. Did they come up with some, some, or some, some kind of a. Something that happened from the lawyers? You do get approvals to issue a citation or something?
We did not issue a citation, no.
You didn't.
He's out. But.
But the guy got away with it for a year because he didn't do anything.
And so.
He didn't do anything for a year. And now it's, he spent the money on the lawyer. And now we're not going to do anything?
We did not issue a citation.
Why?
We made that decision not to issue the citation.
We or you?
Let's postpone it, but I want, I'm not trying to cut you off. I'm just trying to. Be consistent and stick to the. Agenda items and then non-agenda items, so. Please, you can ask the same stuff, but just let's do it at the second session.
Good.
Thank you. Any other comments in person or virtually?
If any of our Zoom participants would like to make a public comment about something that is on the agenda, not in the public hearing. Portion, please raise your hand, dial star, star nine if you're on the phone and we'll wait a moment. I don't believe anyone wants to make a comment.
Okay. Next on tonight's agenda would be the consent. Agenda. Do I have approval or a mo- excuse me, motion or discussion?
I got a little discussion. Uh, nothing serious. Number one, uh, DDA put out that nice review of last year's events. I would like to see sometime in the near future. Where their budget stands and what they're planning for, for this year. I know that they hired McKenna for strategic planning. That's cool because township's doing the same thing. But I like a little bit more information about the DDA and what their plans are.
The Parks Committee has come, um, is now going to do quarterly reports. Maybe it's a good idea for Director Hillbrands on behalf of the Planning Commission. For our DDA director to do the same.
Yeah, I think that'd be a great idea since it is tax dollars and it is a vital part of the community. Secondly, and then this is the last item is that the, uh, airport's at access postcard. I received several comments from residents that. There wasn't any. The streets weren't labeled, so in their mind. It was difficult where this was taking place, especially since they showed Forty-Eighth Street going through the center of their. Which it doesn't, it stops at Thorn Apple. So whoever drew that up could have done a little bit better job. For the benefit of the residents. And that's all I have, Ms. Supervisor.
I have a question about the. Burton Park Oak Will project report. It says in there that after they take those trees out, then they chip them and use that. As landscaping material, isn't that, isn't that spreading more? Just curious.
No, they actually, um, prefer that it stays on site, so that was the recommended use by the consultant.
Oh, okay. Just curious, thank you.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Shipley supports.
It's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Having no financial actions or unfinished business. We'll move on to Article Nine, New Business. Item zero, one, two, twenty, twenty-three. Ordinance for floodplain management. Before we open this for a public hearing, Manager Swayze, could you provide us with a, an overview of what we're talking about?
Yeah, definitely. So the Federal Emergency Management Agency, also known as FEMA, completed the new flood insurance rate maps for Kent County. And they're scheduled to go into effect on February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, they're going to affect after FEMA's required statutory ninety-day appeal period, uh, which was initiated by FEMA. They noticed in our local newspaper, uh, FEMA did not receive any appeals of the proposed floods hazard determinations. Um, or some metals regarding the preliminary flood insurance study report or the firms during that time. So as a township, we do currently participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. Uh, and as a member, the township's required to adopt the new floodplain ordinance prior to the effective firm date of February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. By participating in the National Flood Insurance Program, our residents that live in the designated floodplain areas are eligible for flood insurance. So if we don't participate in the program, the FEMA flood insurance policies would no longer be available to anyone in the township. Homes and businesses that have mortgages in the map floodplain will get their mortgages called due. Uh, when the current policy expires, or they would have to obtain private flood insurance, uh, through an organization like Lloyds of London. So, and then if a federal disaster is declared in the community while we're not participating, federal disaster assistance would not be available to the township or the residents in the floodplain. Uh, so this is a process we started at the last meeting by setting the public hearing, uh, which is scheduled, which is advertised and scheduled for tonight. And then once the public hearing is held, the board is able to adopt the ordinance at the meeting or any future meeting of the board. Uh, so I included the draft floodplain management ordinance in your packet, as well as a communication from FEMA, including the summary of map actions. Uh, the maps are huge, so I did not put them in your packet, uh, but anybody that's interested in seeing them can visit the Planning Department at Township Hall. Or they can visit the website, uh, that's listed in the packet. So FEMA, Eagle, and the Township Building Official, whom will be responsible for enforcing the applicable sections. Of the Michigan Building Code in accordance with the ordinance have all reviewed and approved the draft ordinance. Uh, the proposed ordinance will not change any current processes or policies of the township, other than referencing the newly approved flood insurance rate maps. So the adoption of the new floodplain management ordinance amendment itself comes with minimal costs, including the staff time and printing and publishing. However, adopting the ordinance ensures that township residents in the floodplain areas are eligible, eligible for the FEMA insurance that we talked about earlier. Have you answered any questions in the half?
Um, do you know offhand, Ben? Because I can't tell from the list of the properties where we, did we have any properties added to the floodplain?
There were significant changes made. They're all in that, um, that letter from FEMA, uh, kind of details all of the, um, the maps. But I, I didn't go through and compare them side to side, but there were changes.
I, I, I realize that there were changes, but were there properties that weren't in the floodplain last time? That they remapped and are in the floodplain this time? Or vice versa?
I wouldn't be, I, I don't.
You don't know? Okay.
I make a motion to go into public hearing.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Kessel, to enter a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We are now in public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment or have any questions on this issue is welcome. Anyone online?
If any of our Zoom participants would like to participate in this public hearing, please raise your hand or dial star nine. We'll wait a moment. Back to you.
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee, um, McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley to close public hearing. All in favor, or excuse me, um. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We are now back in regular session, which brings us to considering the ordinance, um, for the floodplain management.
I just have one last question, Grace. When FEMA goes through and remaps, um, the township really doesn't have a choice whether to accept or not. Uh, the individual homeowner, homeowner could appeal or could get a, um. Elevation survey if they think their property is a blood of the floodplain, is that right? I mean, we can't really. Take any action against adopting this.
No.
You know, we can't supersede FEMA, okay?
And it looks like some of these, uh, it looks like unless you live on a hill, you're in a floodplain.
That's us. We lit, we were in the floodplain, we live on a hill, and we had to hire Nader Veld, I believe, to, um, prepare the paperwork and do the survey, and so we were exempt from having to get flood insurance.
Cause you're way above the floodplain.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Wow.
But in this case, this provides residents the option. To get insurance. So it's really, since it's a benefit to the residents.
Because not everyone would be able to opt out based on.
Sure, exactly. So since it is the, a benefit to, could be a benefit to some residents, I make a move to approve the adoption of the ordinance that addresses the floodplain management provision.
Shipley supports.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley. To approve the, the ordinance as presented for floodplain management. Clerks Slater, please call the role.
Trusty Kessel.
Yes.
Trusty Nordhook.
Yes.
Trusty McDonald.
Yes.
Treasure Pierce.
Yes.
Trusty Shipley.
Yay.
Looks later, yes, Supervisor Los Bruns.
Yes, motion carried. Item zero, one, three, twenty, twenty-three. Contract for spongy moth spray, formerly known as gypsy moths.
So in the fall of two thousand twenty-two, we contracted with Aquatic Consulting Services LLC to conduct our spongy moth. Egg mass surveys to determine the areas for potential aerial spraying for two thousand twenty-three. So as a result of that survey, it's been recommended that approximately four hundred and ninety-eight acres of the township be sprayed for spongy moth suppression. Should be noted that the recommended acreage is a bit higher than what was in sprayed in two thousand twenty-two, when we sprayed four hundred and thirty-one acres. But significantly lower than years previous to that. So for example, in two thousand eighteen, we sprayed one thousand one hundred and fifteen acres. And we sprayed one thousand eight hundred eighty-nine acres in two thousand nineteen, uh, and then we started to come down in two thousand twenty when we sprayed seven hundred and thirty-six acres. So our biologist, Aquatic Consulting Services indicates that, uh, and this is a quote from his report, judging from observations this fall, Cascade Township is still in much better shape than other areas in Michigan. But we need to maintain an intensive monitoring protocol to avoid losing the ground that we've gained so far. So ACS also notes that the state in general is still in a very erratic spongy moth cycle, but there's been a notable rebound in some neighboring communities in two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two. Uh, we'll note that I kind of surveyed the other communities in the area that participate and Ada Township, Kentwood, Walker, and Wyoming have all preliminary indicated. That they're going to be spraying again in two thousand twenty-three. So we had utilized a company called Mid Michigan Helicopter, Inc. for our services since onset of our program until two thousand fifteen. When Mid Michigan Helicopter was bought out by Hamilton Hot Helicopter, and they've overseen our spraying program for the last eight years. Uh, our spray program last year was successful with no known issues reported from the contractor or from our residents in the affected area. After we sprayed last year, the follow-up report from Aquatic Consulting Services indicated the spray program was successful. In suppressing the spongy moth population, a majority of the indicated spray areas with little defoliation observed. So our two thousand twenty-one contract weight was sixty-two dollars and twenty cents an acre, and in two thousand twenty-two, it was sixty-seven dollars and forty cents an acre. Which was the first significant contract increase percentage-wise we had had in several years. The two thousand twenty-three spray contact proposal, uh, calls for spraying four hundred and ninety-eight acres at a cost of sixty-nine dollars and eighty cents per acre. Which would be a three point six percent increase over two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, the rise in cost is associated with increases in the product they use and continued high fuel costs. So if we spray all of the recommended area in two thousand and twenty-three, the program is anticipated to cost thirty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. So if it's approved by the township, uh, the spray will take place in the period between May first and June fifteenth, with a more specific date to be available when the weather breaks. Uh, we are required to notify all the residences in the spray block area of the program. And any objectors to the spray program are eligible to be removed from the spray block at the discretion of the township. So I included in your packet the proposed agreement with Hamilton Helicopter, the communication from Aquatic Consulting Services. Uh, a map of the proposed spray blocks and some information from MSU Extension on those gips, uh, spongy moths. And I almost made it through the whole thing without saying gypsy moths. Spongy moss and some information on the product that's used as well. So, uh, if we choose to go this year, we've done this program for going on twenty-five years now, and we've typically participated in the program. Because the acknowledgement of the effect the spongy moth population could have on the tree canopy cover for the township. So during the onset of the program, it wasn't uncommon for us to spray a thousand to two thousand acres per year. Uh, but the continued treatments allowed us to be successful with our spongy moth. Uh, population control. And then our partnership with AC, uh, Aquatic Consulting Resources and Hamilton Helicopters. Ensures that we can officially allocate our resources to the program. Uh, and in fact, there was a couple of years, uh, two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, and two thousand thirteen, where the recommendation was to not spray at all. Uh, so again, just to recap, uh, two hundred and ninety, four hundred and ninety-eight acres, sixty-nine dollars and eighty cents per acre. Uh, total cost of thirty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. The budget was prepared with fifty thousand dollars for this program this year. Got the answering questions right now?
I'll say it again this year that, uh, being a witness to what those little critters can do to thousands of acres of woods up north. I make a recommendation that we, once again this year, um. Go under contract with, for the spongy moth now instead of the gypsy moth.
Have a motion?
Wait, can I ask a question? First? I'm not trying to, um.
You're the boss.
Undermine the, the, how ruthless the spongy moth can be. The question is, um. The information is given, but we're getting the information from the same company, right? Who's providing the service? Probably correct, but we've got kind of like an agreement with the Kent, uh, Kent County Conservation District and resources there who've been great with oak wilt. I'm just curious, um. Do we have, did we or can we? Tap into other resources? For, um, for input other than the, for, other than the company selling us the product? Does that make sense?
Yeah, so I would recommend, uh, talking to the MSU Extension. Um, they're really the, um, experts, you know, in, in the area. Uh, they've actually have a document they put out that talks about, um, the, the natural cycle of the spongy moth. In particular, there's a fungus that attacks them during their cycle. So when they get overpopulated and when the weather is right. I'll be honest, I can't remember if it's either too dry or too wet. Um, there's a, there's a fungus that naturally, um, brings down the gypsy moth populations, so. Um, you know, the, the articles that I've read from them say, you know, it's hard to predict, you know, when that fungus will actually, you know, take effect. Um, but, uh, we could certainly, I mean, I could talk to them, I can provide that, that document. Um, I'm happy to, I talked to Kent Conservation District briefly about it, uh, last year. Um, I, I don't recall them having any specific expertise, you know, they really deal more with, you know, the, the plant fungus and the invasive species and that, but I could certainly touch base with them again. You know, this, this is actually early for putting this on the agenda, so we've approved it as late as early April before, so I don't think they're. Blowing it, you know, another two weeks. If you wanted additional information, I would just forewarn you that there's not going to be anything absolutely, you know, on the end still. Um, you know, you could probably make a, a good argument either way.
And didn't you say last year, I believe, that? This is so specialized. There's this, there's so few parties that do this kind of work.
Yep.
Getting a helicopter and all the things, so. There's not a lot of ways to get a lot of different bids.
Yeah, so we ask every year for a list of bidders, um, and every year there's a couple biplane applicators on the list. There's no other helicopter applicators. And the problem is when you spray with a biplane, it's a lot less, um, exact. Um, the recommendation is really to use the helicopter applicator to ensure, you know, again, we talk about people being able to ask to opt out of the program. When we do get those requests, I always, um, send them to our biologist, um, to talk it through, and I'd say. Eight times out of ten, those people are satisfied and stay in the block. However, if we do end up having a property to remove, it's almost impossible to remove them with a biplane applicator. Uh, with a helicopter applicator, they can remove them from the.
Might be worth, um. More seeing if there's an independent, um, resource available to, to come in and look at the amount. But we can always do that going forward.
With that, I'll, I'll support John's motion.
It's a motion, uh, by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald. To approve the proposed contract for this year's spongy moth spray. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item zero, one, four, twenty, twenty-three. Metro Act permit request from Unity Fiber. Manager Swayze?
Thank you. So, uh, we, I think we just did one of these too, actually, but, uh, to recap. Uh, the Metro Act was enacted as a means to provide statewide oversight through the Mu- Michigan Public Service Commission. Uh, in uniformity to the permitted use of local public right-of-ways for telecommunications infrastructure. So we've received a Metro Act permit bilateral form and application from Unity Fiber LLC, and the initial term of the request is fifteen years. So the township typically receives in the neighborhood of twenty-three thousand dollars in Metro Act permit fees from the Michigan Public Service Commission. Those funds are used for right-of-way maintenance activities. Um, there's also a five hundred dollar application fee to apply for a Metro Act permit. And Unity Fiber did, uh, put that down. Uh, so I included in your packet the, uh, Metro Act permit application from Unity Fiber and the Metro Act permit bilateral form. Um, they are fill-in-the-blank type forms, uh, so the passage of Metro Act, uh, really, um. There's little opportunity for the township to request modifications to the permit. Uh, we do go through a due diligence process. The state records indicate there's no issues with Unity Fiber as a Metro Act permit entity. Uh, the biggest thing we do is contact the Kent County Road Commission, who's actually responsible for permitting the work. Uh, in the right of ways. So essentially, they have to first come to us to get their Metro Act permits, and then they have to go to the road commission to get the work permits. Uh, the road commission has been working with Unity Fiber. Uh, this application is actually a, uh, four-unit application, so not only did we get it, but Kentwood. Caldonia and Gaines Township all got the application as well, and the company is based out of Alabama, so. Um, this one is taking a little bit more work from the road commission, but they did indicate that, um, they do not have a problem with the township passing the, um. The metro permit application. Uh, with that, happy to answer any questions in the half.
I find it, uh, just like the last one that we did, it doesn't limit, uh, competition at all, and that's good for the residents. I find it rather interesting that, uh, uh, it is a foreign limited liability company.
Foreign?
Yeah, that's what it says right here. Foreign, and their headquarters is in Alabama, but they're owned by overseas somewhere. Don't know where. But. That's life nowadays.
They come with a balloon that floats over the township?
Yeah, the Navy's in Lake Michigan waiting to pick it up.
What happens if we don't? I'm, I'm not saying we wouldn't, but just what happens if the board doesn't adopt it?
So we have to, uh, announce a specific reason why we don't, and then that's reported to the entity in the Michigan Public Service Commission, and then the Michigan Public Service Commission decides what the next.
I make a motion that we approve it as we have in the past.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald, to approve the Metro Act permit request from Unit, Unity Fiber. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item zero, one, five, twenty, twenty-three. Budget and vendor contract for our annual, um, July Fourth celebration. Lieutenant Albright, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Good evening. We come to head skewed to consider the, uh, the budget and the funny business contract. For the Fourth of July celebration, uh, that committee. Uh, met at the end of January to start the process for this year. Seems a little early, but it takes a while to get everything wrangled, uh, as we do. Um, I believe in your packets, you have, uh, the budget, which I believe Ben will talk about. Uh, at another, and after me, and then the budget, uh, or the, uh, budget for the funny business contract is, um. In your packets also. Um, we have some new water rides this year. That should be exciting for the, uh, the kids and maybe cool them off on what is normally the hottest day of the year. Um, and then we have a couple of new, uh, um, swinging rides too. So if you have any questions about funny business or, uh, how Ben, Ben speak about the budget.
Andy, what was it last year?
Last year's budget?
Yeah.
Was? Uh, twenty, twenty-two. Oh, Ben, I lost that.
A little bit less, right?
This is the years, yes, it was, um.
I believe we ended up at sixty-seven or sixty-eight thousand dollars last year, and that had creeped up over, you know, the last time we had had it, which was two thousand nineteen.
Yeah, so last year was our first year again. Um, two thousand eighteen was forty-two thousand for the funny business contract. Two thousand nineteen was forty-one thousand. So it's up to fifty. One now, I believe it was.
And we're just starting to see some creep in the other expenditures as well, um, to the point now where, um, if the township board does approve it tonight, we'll probably put in a, a budget amendment. Um, just because it's kind of outside of that, that threshold that we usually look at, so we just thought it'd be important for the, the board to see the, the full, the full budget. Um, fire department does a great job of raising funds from local companies for that, um, that those have. Those went down, obviously during the pandemic, you know, we're hoping that some of those will creep back up. Typically, we, we target about twenty thousand dollars in, in local donations, so I will continue to try to do that, but. Um, the, the budget for the overall budget for the event is, has creeped up, you know, and we're doing the exact same thing, right? So the. We're doing the fireworks with ADA, uh, that's creeped up, you know, four thousand dollars for each of us over the past couple of years. Funny business contract has creeped up, so just like all of our other supply chain stuff, we're seeing just general inflation.
Well, it's a great day, and I know everybody has a lot of fun. It's become a tradition, and so. I'd make the motion to approve the funny business contract for, uh, July fourth, twenty, twenty-three.
Shipley supports.
It's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley. To approve the proposed budget and funny business contract for the Fourth of July celebration. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
And there will be food trucks this year, right?
There will, so yeah, we have a little bit of, uh, excitement coming, so, um, should be a good year. And I'll stand by for the next one too, if, uh, that's all right.
Oh, yep. Zero, one, six, twenty, twenty-three, uh, a resolution for road closures for the Fourth of July celebration.
Same as, uh, every year before, uh, Cascade Road, Twenty-Eighth Street, and then Jack Smith in front of the library, uh, and Wizard Center here. Um, basically from Burton to Twenty-Eighth Street, uh, Twenty-Eighth Street to Thorn Hills, and then Jack Smith to, uh, the corner here at Thorn Book. Uh, will be closed for the event. Nine thirty-ish till three-thirty. For the, uh, for the whole parade route. I'm sorry, nine-thirty to about twelve-thirty for the parade route. Um, three-thirty up here for the street fair.
Andy, is your parade, uh, this year the same time as Ada Parade? Normally they're about same time?
Uh, no, Ada goes about nine o'clock, and then we go at ten o'clock, so, um, some of our trucks even go over there, some units from there. Come over here after our parade, so once it finishes, uh, then we have. Kind of more people join at the end, so.
Okay. On. I was just gonna make a comment about him. Nice stash. Doesn't interfere with your mask, does it?
It does not interfere with my mask, no.
All right.
No.
Notice those okay with us using their parking lot again?
What's that? I'm sorry.
Notice is okay.
We haven't consulted with them yet, but every. We haven't consulted with them yet, but every year they close on the uh Fourth, so it's not normally a problem. We do get permission slips with uh waivers um from all of our um entities, so.
The fire department does a great job of putting all this together and really handling all of that.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Move to approve the resolution for the road closures for the Fourth of July parade.
Shipley supports.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley, who approved the proposed resolution for road closers, the road closures for the July Fourth celebration. If you're pleased, call the roll.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook?
Yes.
Trustee Kessel?
Yes.
Trustee Shipley?
Yay.
Treasure Pears?
Yes.
Quick Slater, yes. Surprise of Lux Prince.
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you. Item zero one seven twenty twenty-three. Resolution to amend the zoning ordinance to revise the major street plan. Do we have Director Hillbrands for this?
Thank you, supervisor. Also, for your review tonight, our proposed revision to the major street plan, which is an appendix in the zoning ordinance. The major street plan is essentially a zoning tool that provides the township with an additional way to regulate where certain uses may be located. Uh, the plan classifies all streets as either a freeway, arterial street, collector street, or local street. So certain special uses that are more likely to generate significant traffic, such as trucking terminals, daycares, or golf courses, for example, are required to have direct access to either an arterial or collector street, which would then be better equipped to handle larger traffic loads. So staff received an inquiry about locating a trucking terminal on an industrial zone parcel off Craft Avenue between Fifty-second and Sixtieth Streets. So that would seem like an area that would be appropriate for that use, and the zoning would allow it as well. But because that section of craft was only low classified as a local street, the trucking terminal would not be permitted then because it has to have access on the collector or arterial. So because of this, we determined that the major street plan was due for a review to see if revisions were needed, especially since the last uh revision was done in two thousand and ten, so thirteen years ago. Uh, the review focused primarily on industrial zone areas of the township. Since these areas are already zoned industrial and have industrial uses there, they are preferred areas to see uh potentially more intensive uses. Uh, I do also want to note that as part of the review, we use the Kent County Road Commission Truck Route Map as a guide to ensure that any streets proposed for reclassification could handle increased truck traffic. One additional zoning requirement that is tied to the street classification is that the setbacks for residential dwellings. For exam- for example, um the required front yard setback on a local street is thirty-five feet, but that has increased to a forty-three foot setback on a collector street. So those busier, larger roads are required to have larger setbacks on the front of them then. Uh, this is important to note because there are still a few residential dwellings that remain in that section of craft, even though the vast majority of it is zoned as industrial. And it did appear that there are two homes that would now be located within the required front yard setback. With that being reclassified to a collector road, it would then be considered legal non-conforming. So because of that, notices were mailed to all residential property owners in that area to inform them of the changes being proposed. So after review, staff and the planning commission identified ten streets that are proposed to be reclassified from local streets to collector streets. And those streets are shown on the map in your packet as well as in the table that's in my staff memo there. Uh, these streets are almost entirely located within industrial zoning districts, and all the roads are designated as all-season roads on the road commission truck route map. The planning commission held the required public hearing to review the proposed amendments at their January nine meeting, uh during which there were no comments received. And after that public hearing, the planning commission did recommend that the proposed amendments be adopted. So included in your package tonight is a resolution to amend the zoning ordinance to revise the major street uh plan map. And at this time, the board is being requested to adopt the resolution.
Questions, concerns?
Those are two or three houses that you're talking about. Um, you say that they're gonna be uh reclassified as non-conforming. What's that mean to the resident as a taxpayer and as a property owner, although they may be rental properties? What does that mean to them?
Yeah, you're right. So they might be rental property. So essentially, um and it would take a survey to confirm, but when I was looking online, it looked like this could potentially happen. So essentially, they can continue using the home as is, there's no problems with that. They can do day-to-day renovations, but for example, if they were to um knock the home down and build a new one, it'd have to meet the new setbacks. Or if they wanted to make an addition that was within the setback, they'd have to apply for a variance to do so.
Okay. Tax and tax uh liability, there's no change.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, Mr. Knowledge. That's all I have.
Is this, so is it correct that the infrastructure was already in place? It's just that our math did not reflect the current infrastructure?
For the most part, so craft was improved uh a number of years ago when there was utilities put down in it. But the our road classification map didn't change to reflect that. So there's a number of industrial uses already in that area. Um, this just allows for a few more, and then we looked at some of these other industrial roads that again would make sense to be able to accommodate these intensive uses in these already industrial areas where we, you know, prefer to see them from a planning perspective. So this is kind of just catching up since this hasn't been revised in in thirteen years.
Uh, is it prudent that, and this isn't on you, you've done fantastic catching us up on a lot of things over the last two years? Is it prudent that um the township review this maybe annually or more regularly?
Yeah, and the planning commission mentioned that as well. So as a staff, kind of internally, you know, we'll make a note to review this every year, see if we've had requests or if things have changed.
Brian, you may not have an answer to this, but with this change on our part, would it uh loosen up any funds from the county, for instance, to improve Craft Avenue down where that industrial area is? Because that's kind of a snotty road for for trucks.
Sure. I, I wouldn't imagine that our changes here would loosen up any. I I don't know for sure, but I I wouldn't anticipate that then on the view of.
Yeah, so it wouldn't change the ability to spend federal road funds on those roads. So there's actually a different road classification map for that.
Okay.
So we're not changing the federal aid eligibility. Uh, what it will do is potentially uh increase the availability of particularly MEDC grant funds for roads. They do a lot of road reconstruction projects that are specific to economic development. Um, so these class, these redone classifications might make roads eligible for state grants that they weren't eligible before.
Okay. Thanks, Ben.
All right.
Is the company that came to the township, the trucking company that was referenced, um, are they, will this update allow them to come to Cascade?
It would, yep. So that was the big thing was the road classification. So they'd still have to apply for a type-two special use, which goes in front of the planning mission and then the board for final approval. So it doesn't change the approval process, it just essentially allows them to go through that process.
I move to approve the resolution to amend the zoning ordinance on the the street reclassification. Support.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Kessel, to approve the resolution amending the zoning ordinance revising the major street plan as um proposed. Quick Slater, please call the roll.
Treasure Pears?
Yes.
Trustee Shipley?
Yes.
Trustee Castle?
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Quick Slater, yes. Surprise of Lux Prince.
Yes, motion carried. Thank you, Director Hillbrands. Item zero one eight twenty twenty-three. Township manager annual performance evaluation. Uh, this does not require board action, um but just to pass it out because it's that time. It's the same evaluation as last year. Um, and then the proposed timeline is in the memo. Subject to thoughts? Questions, discussions?
One thing I found helpful is I did email Katie and asked her for the completed one we had last year and had all those, everybody's comments consolidated on there. So I think it would be helpful for all of us to get that, um, because I'm gonna refer to it when I complete my part.
Good idea. Good idea.
Suggestion.
Sounds good. Anything else? Okay, then we will um start the process, and then we can have the evaluation first meeting in March, if that works. Next. Article ten, discussion township communication services.
Great, thank you. So you recall, uh as part of our two thousand and twenty-three budget process, uh we had some conversation about how we uh do our communications in the township. Uh, like we have with uh a lot of our other professional services throughout the process. The most recent example being engineering. Um, and at the time, I'd made the commitment to the township board that, yep, we would have the conversation this year about uh what the future of communication services looks like in the township. Uh, shortly after that conversation, uh in talking to uh Mary Ann Sabo, uh who owns our current communication organization, uh she has grandiose plans for our uh internal uh communications person. Uh, if any of you had a chance to work with Hunter over the past couple of years, you know how great he is. And of course, I think Mary Ann recognizes that too and uh wants to promote him in her organization, uh which means that uh the timeline for us having a good discussion about how we want to do our communications is kind of pushed up a bit. Um, so just to give a brief history of kind of our relationship with Sabo, uh as I'm sure a lot of Mary Ann's clients uh come by her, uh we really started with Mary Ann uh kind of in a crisis mode for some issues we had going on in two thousand and seventeen. Uh, but shortly after there, realized the importance it was for us to have communication expertise in our organization. Uh, so in that same year, um we'll note that we did not put a RFP out for this, but kind of piggybacked on a RFP that Kentwood had done at the same time. So uh they were kind enough to provide us all of the responses that they had gotten, so we could take a look. Uh, and we chose to go with Sabo at that time, not only because of our experience with them at that point, um but they were significantly lower than anybody else. So at the time, our internal rate was about forty-five dollars an hour. The other four bidders quoted rates between seventy-eight dollars and a hundred and forty-three dollars an hour. Uh, so we did update the agreement in two thousand and twenty-one, uh basically updated the rates at that time. Uh, it set out five years' worth of rates for our uh internal work as well as uh different rates for uh access to other principles in the company as well as crisis communication. Um, so we're in that that section right now, two thousand and twenty-three. Our rates with Sabo is fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents per hour for our embedded employee up to ninety-six hours per month. So at this point, uh we need to make a decision and kind of, or at least start having a conversation about what our um future of communications is. So I did, you know, put down a couple of options, obviously. Uh, the first option that you always uh think about is just continue to way do things the way we do them. Like we were interested in continuing to stay with Sabo, uh just like we did last time when Caitlin left and Hunter came on. Uh, we would be an interview partner with Sabo, they would bring in a new uh consultant to be our in-house person, uh and we would move on. I will say that it won't be exactly the same. Uh, we started to have conversations. We have more work for Hunter than the contracted capacity right now. So again, he works for the township ninety-six hours a month. Um, we probably have a full forty hours a week of work for him. We started to have to, started to have to prioritize things off the list, or at least to the bottom of the list. So if this was an option that we choose, the first thing I would do would be to get together with Mary Ann and talk about uh potentially bumping up that ninety-six hours to something different. The second option we could do uh is we could uh take a look at uh hiring an internal employee to take over communications for the township. So uh there is a a map for this with some neighboring communities. So both the city of Wyoming uh and Plainfield Township started out as a customer of Sabo PR uh and eventually got again to the same capacity issues where they found that uh it was important for them to bring that in-house. Uh, I will say that that would potentially uh come with some similar complications that we talked about with the the engineering issue, right? So uh when we reviewed engineering last year, not only did we uh bring in our own in-house engineer, uh which obviously is is continuing to work out great, but we we have a consultant as well, right? And the issue is when you have your, a service like communications vested in a single person, the the chances of that person having all the expertise that you need is pretty slim. Uh, so again, with our engineer, we have our in-house engineer that handles anything he can, but we have our relationship with Paul Dindecker, that if there's something that's not in his wheelhouse or if he's overcapacity, uh gives us an opportunity to do that. So um if we did want to explore the opportunity to have an in-house person, I would certainly recommend that we continue uh to have a relationship with the outside consultants as well. Uh, and that's exactly what both Wyoming and Plainfield is about. Even though they have their in-house person, uh they continue to use Sabo on a on an as-needed or contracted basis, uh either for that um kind of one-off emergency, you know, stuff, or for certain projects, right? So uh we will um eventually this year be talking about a millage proposal, um potentially for the uh for Parks and Recreation. Uh, the Parks Committee is going to be recommending, and the township has budgeted for some type of communications help with that. So that's something potentially where you could contract on a on a per-project basis. Um, and the third option is we we could certainly put it out to bid. Um, I will say that I don't have particularly high hopes from a financial perspective that that would work out well from the township, especially considering what came around last time. And Sabo is really known as the municipal expert kind of in the area. Um, but uh putting out a a bid and seeing what other options are out there is certainly something that we can look at as well. So those are really the three options they they come out with. Uh, what I'm looking for tonight, and I'm sure what Mary Ann is looking for tonight too, is really some some direction, some direction from on our part, so I can get the township communication program in order, and certainly some direction on Mary Ann's part.
Oh, trustee Shipley?
I think that our hiring of an in-house engineer was the right move. It's proven it's worth. It's proven we had quality people out there, and I would like to see us go forward with an in-house PR person that can be dedicated to forty hours a week or whatever you said. You're the office manager there and keep Sabo on call for, like you said, those big uh issues. That's where I'm coming from.
Can we play hardball and say we want, but we want Hunter? Or is he?
Yeah, can we just?
Or was, we always knew it was maybe too good to be true. Even that map on the postcard's not Hunter's fault, it's mine, I've said.
I think we ought to offer Hunter a nice hefty salary that he can't refuse.
I think someone else has to do it because I may have promised not to steal him, so there are seven of us.
Never make promises.
I know. No, you guys have been, the fire station, substantively, the township was handling it great, but from a communication standpoint, it really messed it. We, we needed help getting the message out there, and um our newsletters, it's just been great, so. Can't contain him for forever, but I know he's got to spread his wings. But I like John's idea, because we already have some staff with community, with uh communications capabilities that we haven't really taken advantage of.
As as a growing township with lots of issues in the future and the importance that our residents have repeatedly told us that they want to be kept informed on. I think that it is a full-time job, and I think that finding and hiring a quality person is the right thing to do.
And we will need, um, well, no, hopefully we won't, because we're gonna get it right, but it's never bad to have a relationship with.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Just like uh Ben said, we, we have our engineering firm back up as well.
I like that idea.
Yeah, I like that idea too. I'd like to have some in-house work done on it.
I mean, if we can't have Hunter full-time, then.
We can't, we would make him the right offer.
Would they uh?
He's got a middleman, he is an agent.
Yeah.
Right?
Would they uh be able to work on our website and uh keep things that we've had people talk to us about up to date? And do all those things?
I mean, we certainly try to do that now, um but obviously that's something that this this person would be in charge of, um is doing all of that.
And that, I don't think we've used um Sabo for the website, but internally, that's been an ongoing problem, that the website wasn't getting changed internally as it as requested, and we kept getting, people kept noticing things, and so the right person is in charge of it now, and that person has the capabilities to change it. And I think she just, we we just need to do it. And I think a new uh platform might be required, but she's got all the capabilities to do it, so it needs to be done. Mm-hmm. She's just kind of waiting for direction and for the go-ahead, but I I think it's separate from, that's it, that that has been in-house and and should remain in-house. And we have someone that needs to do it. In fact, I think it needs to be a high priority. Because it could be better than it is, but it's a lot better than it was.
Well, I I I agree. I think we can try and maybe get Hunter and uh still contract with Sabo for those other things. I I'm, I do think we're at a point where we could use an in-house person to do that work for us. But I I I think Mary Ann has done a great job when we needed her and has done it since. And I think the communication now is a lot better than it was before.
There's absolutely no doubt that she knows the business.
She made us look good. Um, given the timeframe, and we appreciate the plenty of advance notice. So to be fair, so that everyone can make accommodations, we should pri- prioritize what our internal capabilities are, kind of evaluate that with what we have, with who we have, and then what we will need.
Yeah, so my plan is to turn around in in short order. Um, my hope is that Mary Ann will be available up here in the next uh couple of days or so. To kind of talk about timeline, um, and then my plan would be back into in front of the board on the twenty second with a potential position description.
Well, that makes sense.
And I and think this is not, um, it's hard for us at the board level. Um, because we don't know exactly who, you know, what the duties have been exactly. I mean, I think I have a pretty good idea, but to make the decision, we gotta have that information and.
I don't know if you need an agent, I'll be available.
Should we just have a bidding war right now? But we want to make sure we give you guys enough clarity also. Yes, please do.
I just wanted to say thanks to everyone because it's really been uh an honor and privilege to work with you guys for the last few years. We developed this model fifteen years ago when Curtis Holt, who's the retiring city manager of Wyoming, I just had lunch with him today, in fact. And he challenged us because uh at that point, the media was only covering the bad stuff that was out there. There was so much good stuff that was happening in Wyoming, and he was frustrated that it wasn't getting out. And so we, he challenged, he wanted me to come in-house, and I said, well, I'm a little too busy to do that, but let me see what I can do. So I developed this in-house model that has worked really well for fifteen years. And in fact, it's worked so well that people are trying to hire away my team members. And the city of Wyoming, you know, realized because you they start with between sixteen and twenty-four hours a week, which is sixty-four to ninety-six hours a month. Because a lot of times, you know, if you're the city of Grand Rapids, you may need two or three or more communications people, but if you're not, you may not. So what we've been able to do, I think, is to come in and work with five different municipalities and really demonstrate the importance of communication. So Wyoming now has one of our alumni and just hired a second person. Which is, I mean, that's just, that's a huge compliment, I think, to us. And then Plainfield Township, they also just hired somebody in-house. So I think it's a huge compliment that um that you guys recognize the importance of communication. And it comes to that tipping point, you know, we're probably gonna have that conversation with Kentwood before too long. I think East is probably pretty stable with us, but we'll, but we'll see. And the nice thing is though is that we're, that we still want to continue to partner with you when you need it. So whether that's a millage education campaign or something else, um, but we've really appreciated this and and the opportunity to come and talk with you. And you have to go through me to get to Hunter.
Yes, you look all nice and soft, but you didn't become a professional PR person. Based on your appearance, right?
And and one thing too is that we were, we'll, it's not like we're just gonna, Hunter's gonna stop work, not come in on Monday. So we're gonna continue to support you. What we've done with Wyoming and Plainfield is at, we've offered to to help you with the job description. We've offered to help screen. There are a lot of people in the community that we know over the years that we can maybe say yay or nay, or at least give you our input. And then we'll, we can help train and transition. So what you really need to do is to figure out what are those skills that you need. So, you know, it's gonna be really challenging to find somebody who is that one person. And we, you know, we joke and Hunter's um internal uh title at Sabo PR is Swiss Army Man because he can do so many different things. It's almost impossible to find somebody who can do the video alongside with everything else. But if you decide we really want to have, you know, you need to have some of those basics handled. But then if it's, if it's video plus or if it's website plus, you know, so you can write your job description and and take a look for for what you need. And then we'll be there for what you, you know, have as uh as other needs.
And we'll work with, we'll figure out what we're capable of, and I know we could, but we'll do it quickly too, so we can have a transition that doesn't.
Absolutely. So we're gonna, we're gonna promote Hunter to be our Director of Visual Arts. Um, as you know, he does a really great job with everything he does, but I think he really shines when it comes to a lot of the video and then the graphic design and things like that. So he's gonna be working more with video and photography. And it has been increasingly difficult as we've gotten more demands from clients to make sure that you guys get the hours that you need. And then to make sure that we can have him doing the other things that will keep him growing and and interested, so.
Uh, the newsletter, photos, the graphics, that's all.
It's all Hunter.
Yep, it's all Sabo, so you get, yeah. You also have been very responsive because there's a lot of times you get things last minute and you're you're not put in the easiest position. So we just, we really appreciate it.
Crisis is your holy grail, right?
Not an easy spot.
We try to be very flexible and, you know, I've got a great team. We love what we do. We love the folks we serve. I just recorded Curtis's uh farewell video today. Hunter's doing that for him, and I hope he's not listening tonight. But uh, you know, one of the things I said fifteen years ago, I didn't even know what municipal communications was, and I was just thinking like, oh my. But it's really become quite the passion for our firm. We represent probably a dozen or so municipalities. And a lot of time, it really is more for specific projects um than it is for this ongoing. But this has been a a great way to serve the community where we we live and work.
Sounds great. So we'll just figure out how much? Specifics?
You mean for Hunter or no?
Yes, please.
Yeah, we're happy to help in whatever way we can.
We'll try to make the transition as least transitional as possible.
And we will too. We'll be there. It's not like we're going anywhere, so.
Okay, good.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight too, both of you. Public comments? On the agenda, not on the agenda? Positive or negative?
My name's Dale Vanderschaf. I live at five, six, six, seven Snow Avenue, one of the last gravel roads in Cascade. So we're here, we were here earlier uh last fall, I think it was, to to get this going as far as trying to pave our road. You guys got here a little earlier than I did, so you could see the dirtiest truck in the parking lot. Anyhow, we're trying to get our road paved. Um, we've gone back through the people on our road and the numbers are the same. We have ten yeses and three not so much. But I guess if you talk to your neighbor, how many of you know somebody that had to pay money to have their road paved? I mean, I just think that should be something that the township would do. We pave bike trails. Everybody probably here lives on a paved road. Did anybody here contribute to pave that road other than in your taxes? So I guess that's my fight. We're gonna have a meeting next week that will, you know, expose the numbers and, but I think we would have a hundred percent participation if it didn't cost us anything. And I just, you know, I've lived on that road for twenty-two years. And it will get paved just past my house because part of its Lowell, if you guys don't remember. Matt here is from the Lowell side, and he's a supporter of it also. I just think it's time. It's a a negative as far as trying to sell your home. Um, didn't really realize that until in the last four or five years when people just say, I don't want to live on a gravel road. And I can tell you why not, but uh, so I just wanted to get here ahead of time just to say, hey, think about it. You know, like you say, we're good uh customers, and I think we uh deserve to have a paved road. And I I honestly, the people that don't want it, you know, basically think that, you know, it's gonna speed up traffic with, I don't think it is. Our school buses that go down that road are one of the fastest vehicles on the road, second to a propane truck. But uh, there's not many horses on the road anymore. Well, you laugh, but I mean, that's part of the problems that we got some horse people on the road. So, yeah, um, but it, you know, we're we're rural, we're on the edge of the township, we realize that, but yet. So that's kind of uh my plea.
And which part of Snow Avenue?
Uh, you guys are paving from Sixtieth halfway down towards the north. So it's kind of odd because you think the Fifty Second to the south would be Cascade, but it's the opposite. But then the tax part of it is Cascade is on the west side and Lowell is on the east side. So it's, it's like the big cross.
And next week, is there already a meeting scheduled in term? Is that, okay?
So, thank you.
Thank you. What's the process or does anyone who's been on the board longer have any um?
Well, the county. About this a little bit, the county will pick up or won't pick up?
So the county will pick up forty-five percent of the costs. That's their, that's their portion for reconstruction projects. Which going gravel to pavement is reconstruction, so um, you know, the, yeah, and to, you know, to talk about the process, right? So the Township Board approved the engineering work order with the the Road Commission last year. Uh, so they worked throughout the summer and to the fall on that. Uh, so we have those drawings back now, so we have a meeting. Um, and in fact, I sent it out to all the residents, but I'll make sure you guys get it as well. The meeting in this room a week from tonight uh to share the um, the drawings with the residents, you know, because you guys may remember from some of these projects in the past, a lot of them die when they find out how many trees are gonna get cut down. Uh, so it's always, the first step in the process is always to have the project area survey, understand exactly what the physical form of it is gonna look like if there's a a road to be paved. So we'll introduce that to the residents uh that live in the project area on Wednesday and then just have the conversation with them, you know, is it a project they support? And if if they do support it, what is their ask, right? So uh, they eventually have to sign a petition again that says we want this section of road paved. We want the township to pay for all of the local portion of it. We want the township to pay part of the local portion with us supporting it. So that conversation, you know, happens, and then we'll have a presentation in front of the township board. So then the Road Commission will come to that meeting too, present you guys with the the project, uh, the cost. Residents will get a chance to talk, just like Dale did tonight, about, you know, how they feel about the project. And then the board eventually makes a decision whether it goes forward or not, and we pay for the whole thing. It's not an issue. So the issue with this one a little bit is, uh, as Dale mentioned, for what's called the Town Mine Roads, there's a map that the County Road Commission put together back in the nineteen twenties for responsibility, right? So the responsibility of the section of road that we're talking about, which is Snow Avenue between Fifty Second and Sixtieth Street, the north half of it is Lowell Township's responsibility, and the southern he- half mile is Cascade Township's responsibility. However, the residents are decided, divided east-west across the entire road. So in the project area, you have six or seven residents that live in Cascade Township, and you have six to seven residents that live in Lowell Township. So if we did choose to do a special assessment district, we would have to work with Lowell Township in order to collect the special assessment for the people that live on their half of the road. Lowell Township has been involved in this whole conversation. They're not interested in participating in paving the northern half of it, which is why we're looking at kind of a half paved road. Uh, it's not ideal, but we have done that in the past, um, way before my time. We paved Butrick south of um, south of Forty Eighth Street. The same thing, we kind of end in the arbitrary area. That wasn't due to a boundary issue, that was due to some residents that supported it and some residents that didn't. Uh, but we do have some uh gravel roads that turned into paved in the middle of a road section.
So is it, is it prohibitive that Cascade could just pay for the whole thing and be a good neighbor?
Lowell's got it.
Lowell has to?
No, but I just don't want to pay for, but the halfway, but the part that would be our responsibility, that's a set, that's okay, right? You're not asking us to pay for Lowell's half, correct?
No, the the problem is 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 the division is two different ways.
Right.
Like Ben was trying to describe it. Yeah, I mean, we're, we're trying to get whatever we can, you know what I mean? And I didn't know that paving half the road was an option. I mean, so we started this process before the pandemic. And it got tabled, you know, through that, but, you know, I've been told when I bought my house that it, they're gonna be paving the road. And that was, you know, not true, of course, but uh, you know, I'd like to think that someday in my lifetime, I would have pavement on my house.
Is it, does it happen to be more favorable that the portion that Cascade's responsible for is benefits more people than?
Yes. Yeah. The northern, northern end of it is more farmland.
Right, that's north of, yes, north of the railroad tracks. That's not where people are.
Yeah, so. I just think it, you know, all of us, besides a couple, think that it would be a great improvement. And uh, yeah, to me, I have a motorcycle and I have classic cars. Just very limited to what I can even drive down that road. It's gotten a lot better since then and I worked on getting the crushed limestone down. You know, that that was a hundred percent improvement, because it used to be seriously that you'd have mud trenches that deep in that road.
Without making, without raising expectations unrealistically, is is it possible if we were to come up with a agreed-upon plan, does the Road Commission have the capability to do it this next, this coming construction season?
So we have to make a decision in pretty short order, but uh, the local road projects are benefiting from the fact that MDOT does not have a lot of work in the Kent County region this year. Uh, so we're actually seeing uh the contractors are hungry and asphalt bids especially are coming back lower than they had the past couple of years. So um, you know, we have to make a decision probably sometime in March, but I think there's a potential for it to be done this year.
So you'll meet and bring back whatever, okay?
So as far as making a decision on, at the board level, um, that the Lasker Ridge Internet, for example, is a tough one, right? Because one, it's so expensive and two, the township has never paid to install public utilities. Is that the correct? Okay, and this is a little different?
This is a little different. So I'll say, so I've been, uh, I've been going through records again. I've been trying to figure out the last time the township paved the road, how that cost was was done. There is records of a special assessment district when that section of Butrick was paved. Uh, but I haven't been able to find any records on what exactly it is. My hope is when we come back to the board uh with all the information is March, I'll be able to give you a little bit better perspective on what we've done in the past. I just haven't been able to find any information.
And this doesn't open the door to people thinking the township's gonna come in and repave their private road development that their contractor did a bad job on and that nobody wants to pay their assessment to, right? Remember, we've got a lot of.
Yeah, so I'm certainly not gonna open the door for that, but there are seven or eight sections of gravel roads still in the township. Uh, I think in my tenure career here, I've talked to all of them about potentially paving their sections. Again, some of them have died because people don't want the trees cut down. Some of it then died because of the money issue. Uh, but eventually word will get out, you know, if the township does pay for the whole thing. Uh, we should probably have a plan together about if we're gonna pay the rest of the gravel roads.
And what roads, like, for example, it seems like a Town Mine Road is a more reasonable request than like um, one of the other ones that just kind of dead ends and.
I would, I would agree. So you have the section of snow on the other side of um Fifty Second, the dead ends into Ninety-Six. You have that section of Quiggle that's gravel, the dead ends in the Ninety-Six. You have a section of Butrick uh, right off of Whitneyville before you cross the bridge, that ends in the Ninety-Six. Um, you know, the ones that, you know, probably have a good argument would be, again, that section of Butrick. If those people wanted it, right, because that's a connector road, it connects Forty-Eighth Street to Sixtieth. Uh, you have Bull Avenue, uh, parts of that, now they connect Grand River to uh Butrick on the the north end. So uh, there are some that make sense as improvements to the transportation network in the township. And there's some that probably don't make sense because literally the only people that drive those sections of road are the people that live.
Or the trees and the atmosphere to get to Burden Park are such that there's no way we're gonna touch that. Because the residents can't figure out, there's no consensus, right?
Matt would probably lose the biggest industry out of the, of the whole stretch.
Matt doesn't count because he's a Lowell resident, but. I'm just joking, but you could, we gotta make cutthroat decisions at the board level with public funds, so.
So Matt Buckold, five, seven, seven, six, Snow Avenue. Um, so I've lived at the location for about twenty years. When I bought the property, there was activity putting together between the townships and even bound in Caledonia to pave um in that area. So I purchased thinking, you know, it wasn't a done deal, but that that activity was was potentially coming fairly soon. So twenty years later, um, it hasn't, I am on the section of road that I think will lose the most trees because there is a kind of a kink in the road that will have to be straightened out as part of this. So I do, you know, dislike the idea of the tree impact, but it does not weigh the benefit of finally getting the road paved and and get that access. So um, like Dale said, there were some, there are small horse farms on the road. Um, we've had people twenty years ago riding horses every day. We don't see that um anymore. Um, and also just the, you know, you know, the traffic speed with the north half not being paved and that. Um, and also just the, you know, you know, the traffic speed with the north half not being paved. And that includes an area south of the railroad tracks too, but there's maybe five houses in that area. Um, and a fair amount of farmland. So just wanted to be able to share tonight and have you begin thinking about this and know that on the Lowell side, you know, between. Cascade and Lowell, there's a lot of support for 10 out of the 13 residents that would like to see it. Um, my neighbor is a bit neutral, would maybe prefer not, and cost is the big factor for him. So that's, um, not so much philosophically, but, but the cost element of it. So. Thanks for considering, appreciate it.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for, um, coming tonight in person to keep the issue. Front and center.
Thank you.
Oh yeah. Thank you, Trustee Castle for.
We appreciate you guys considering.
I think it's reasonable and if we can help, I think we all want to. I just don't want to. Be a softie that puts the township in, you know, we just want to be prudent, but. We'll do what we can, right? Great. Any other comments? Either in, in person or virtually?
If anyone would like, if any of our Zoom participants would like to participate in this public comment, please raise your hand. Doesn't look like anyone would like to comment.
Manager comments?
Yeah, you guys still hear me talk yet?
No.
All right. I just got a couple of things. Um, Brian and Anne aren't here tonight, but I do have a short update on Egypt Creek. So. Uh, we did submit our FOIA request and got our first lug of information back. Uh, a lot of it was just emails and information that we had sent to them. Uh, but we did get a copy of the reply from, uh, the company owner, uh, sent to Eagle. And then a series of emails that they've been setting up a site visit. So the site visit was originally scheduled for February 1st. Just canceled because there was snow on the ground at that point. Uh, so now it's scheduled for March 7th. Um, and then that email also, uh, is a response from Eagle to them. Uh, you remember a couple of weeks ago, we had issues. They're doing a lot of earth moving on the site and we went and took videos and stuff. Eagles told them specifically to stop doing that. And so, uh, this process is done. So it's nice that Eagle is being responsive and. You know, kind of thinks that we're still waiting to March 1st for, uh, that, but at least it's moving where it wasn't. Well, the other thing that I wanted to talk about was, uh, we're continuing to work with, um, Mr. Van Essen on the ARPA issue with Kent County. Uh, so again, we were, or the city of Grand Rapids was awarded $3 million of ARPA funds for the, um. Water remediation project that came with huge strings attached to it.
Like the heaviest strings ever.
So, uh, we're actually having a meeting in the morning, uh, with the, uh, Grand Rapids legal team as well. Uh, Mr. Van Essen and the Grand Rapids legal team will then, uh, correspond with the Kent County, uh, legal team to figure out if there's a. Uh, an avenue for Grand Rapids to accept those funds. That'll all culminate and we're planning on having a closed session at the next board meeting. For Mr. Van Essen to come and give the board an update on what's going on and a recommended correspondence for those funds. So, uh, anticipate that coming up on the 22nd.
Let's keep, uh, our regular township council to in the loop and.
Yes, yeah. And he's committed to doing that. So, uh, Mr. Farber, yeah, yeah.
Barbara.
He is, uh, committed to doing that. So, um.
Great.
That's all I got.
Um, manager comments?
Board member.
All right. Or you're right. Thank you, board member.
I'll get up and thank everybody for being here. It's a small group tonight. Mrs. Pierce, thanks for everything that you do, making sure that one of our valuable members gets here. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, everybody out in Zoom land.
Christine Nordhoff?
I just have a question for Ben. Um, do we have any updates on the deer hunt? How successful that was?
So I know they're collecting information. Um, you know, part of it, uh, kind of got delayed because the person that was collecting that information went out on maternity leave. Um, but she is, um, scheduled to have a report back to the township board by the end of the first quarter as to what the success was. So.
Thank you.
Treasurer Pierce?
Thank you, and supervisor, excuse my voice. I had. Telling my resignation as treasurer of Cascade Township. Um, tonight and, uh, hopefully February, February 28th. Um, I had, as you know, a surgery in December and it didn't go well. And my partner was simply worsening. And I believe this township deserves a full-time. Concentrated person to do the job. And I couldn't do it anymore. So I really appreciate my time at Cascade. And wish you all the best.
Wish you all the best, Ken. You're the. It's been an honor getting to know you personally and professionally. And I think. You're the exception because you're selfless and. You don't need any attention, but you always do the right thing. Even if you're wrong, you're always making decisions that's best for the township. We're going to miss you.
Yeah, I'd like to chime in too and say. There's, uh. Ken reminded me tonight, it's been 14 years. And, uh. We, uh, served on, uh, a lot of committees together and. Made some tough decisions. And I think. This council was always very valuable. We thought through them and I think. The things that we did do, uh, turned out to be good decisions for the township. And he has become a very good friend. And someone that I respect a lot. And. I admire you for sticking it out as long as you have with everything that you've been dealing with. And I want to wish you and Joe the very best and tell you I'm going to miss you terribly.
Just comment, if, if you guys recall, whenever it's come up to a financial issue. I've always looked to Ken and said. Mr. Treasurer, what do you think of this decision? Between him and Jim, I've, I've made some comfortable decisions on the boards. So. Thanks for all your guidance, Ken. I appreciate it.
Christine Nordhoff?
Thanks for your service, Ken.
Thank you, Kenny.
Thank you, Ken. Great service. You've been so nice to me and one of the first people to welcome me before I was even elected clerk. And I appreciate your wisdom. And God bless you.
Before I became supervisor, I'm like, there's no way that guy is going to get reelected. He hasn't done any campaigning. And I felt bad because I thought you were pretty good and. Didn't need to campaign. It was, it wasn't even close.
You can fill all the people's.
Yeah. And you, you're one of the people that, uh, you don't say a lot, but when you do, it's important. So you, you, you listen, no, or people listen. They don't tune you out.
Ken, nobody could have done it better. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Well, you got. Got big shoes to fill, but we'll do it the right way. I think I'll call a special meeting sometime next week with legal counsel just to. Find out how you reject someone's, um, resignation and then also process wise. Next steps.
The other situation, we're moving on.
And I guess.
That just doesn't.
Forced our hand. Your witty, wittiness continues, Ken.
He had all the angles covered. He had all the angles covered.
You're not working with us, Ken.
Checkmate. Right? All right. So special meeting sometime next week. Ken, we need help. And, um, we sure are going to miss you, Ken.
I'd be glad to. Also, I can.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other board comments? Or motions? What can say at the last time?
Move to adjourn.
Support.
So motion by Treasurer Pierce, supported by Treasurer McDonald to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Rejoined.